It's recording.
All right, I'd like to call to order the town of Hudson regular town council meeting for February 3rd at 6:00 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stadler?
Here.
Councilmember Knoll?
Here.
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mestes?
Here.
Councilmember Hammack? Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Mayor Harges?
Here.
Mr. Pierce has joined us.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda?
No.
All right, point in our meeting for citizens comments, anybody wishing to address the council on anything that is not already set for public comment on the agenda may do so at this time. It looks like the only person who is on the line is set for public comment later. All right, consent agenda, did everybody get a chance to look at the consent agenda and do you have any questions? If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
And make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Back end.
It moved and seconded, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Stadler?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Mestes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knoll?
Yes.
Mayor Harges?
Yes. Motion carries.
Uh, and your attorney is on the line now. Hillary's with us.
Oh, good, okay. So, item two, the water bill hearing. A hearing for the purpose of receiving comment for water usage and billing located at 225 Grape Street, Hudson, Colorado. Are Mr. and or Mrs. Pierce present? You will have to unmute to speak.
Okay.
All right, let the record show they are online for the meeting. I will now open the hearing at 6:02. Will Mr. Pierce please present the information or any evidence that he may have?
Yeah, basically, I put together a little word document, did you guys get that?
Uh, is that this one? Yes, we did.
Okay. Basically, when we got our bill, it showed that we used an additional 36,000 gallons of water. Um, I met Mike, who was a former employee with Public Works out there, we walked the entire property shortly after receiving that bill. Uh, we couldn't even find any, any signs of water anywhere. And 36,000 gallons of water would leave some evidence of either a pool, a sinkhole, something, because 36,000 gallons of water basically will fill four 12 by 24, four-foot deep swimming pools. So, if the water went through that and we used it, where would the water be? So, I did some research, the, I spoke to, um, I forget who I spoke with, um, oh, Charity and Hunter about this after I learned that Mike was no longer there. And, uh, they had no idea how much water comes out of the average water spigot, so I did a lot of research on this. It turns out that the average water spigot will dispense about 375 gallons per hour. So, I included a couple of the reports in the readouts there, one of them is on 9/6, at 12:15 PM, the reading showed we used 7,040 gallons of water. Calculating that by the average amount of water that comes out of a spigot means that that spigot would have been, had to have been on for 18 hours. And started at 6:00 PM the day before. So, something, something's not right, and I, and I requested, I, when I was talking to Mike, I told Mike, it's gotta be, and even Mike agreed, there's gotta be something wrong with the meter, that it's flipping numbers or something's happening. Um, and it's unfortunate he's no longer with, with us, but, um, I, I told him to have the meter inspected and maybe replaced, and he was going to talk to his boss, and then a few weeks later, I found out he's no longer with, with, with Hudson. So, my point is, there's no way we could have used 36,000 additional gallons of water without leaving evidence somewhere on the property.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Pierce?
You had them check for a leak at the meter site underground, correct?
Yes, yeah, according to Mike, that's, he did that, he checked, and, uh, for, for several days, we, we constantly monitored that meter looking for leaks or any signs of additional usage, and we could not find any. Me and Mike went through the property itself, checked toilets, we looked underneath the house to make sure there's no water leaks. We couldn't find any, and, and even, even in the letter I received from the town, uh, they said that it's confirmed we have no leaks.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
You didn't have any incidents prior to the September date, nothing that was abnormal, high?
No, not for, I mean, you know, I've owned the place for 15 years and nothing.
There's a few back in August that look high. Yeah, yeah.
And typically, August and even into September could be watering lawn usage, but...
Right, maybe, and, and if you look at the past years, it has shown like an increase in like, you know, 10,000 gallons or, you know, like, or not even the 8,000 gallons or something, you know, over a 60 or 90-day period, 60-day period. But not 36,000 gallons. We totally understand that, I mean, it's gotta be something with the meter or something, because 36,000 gallons of water is a lot of water.
Do we have any more, like, 2019, 2018, a couple of years back that we can
Compare?
Compare to?
I don't.
That was going to be part of my presentation.
Okay. Uh, okay. Any other questions from the council? And the staff have a presentation?
Thank you, so, Mr. Pierce's meter was replaced in 2016, it was part of the program when we went to radio read meters. Looking over his historical use, he usually averages around the 20,000 to 30,000 gallon range in the summertime and in the teens in the wintertime. This year, his August bill was in the 30,000 range, his October bill was in the 30,000 range, and his September bill, the one in question, was over 60,000 gallons. Um, with that, because the meter has been installed since 2016, and the reading for last month went down to 13,000 gallons, I can't say without a doubt that there's an issue with the meter, it seems like it's reading accurately, and since the usage has gone down, we can't say that there's still an active leak. We have discussed that with Mr. Pierce, and the discussion that Hunter and I had with him, Hunter, and I'll have him speak to this, calculated out what an average leak could constitute with, oh, God, our garden hose running. So, from the town's perspective, he has an active functional meter, and all we can report is that the water did pass through the meter. The amount in question that he's saying is about $310.32 of extra water flowing through the meter.
Could that be a slow leak in a hose?
I'll have Hunter speak to that because he knows more about the actual water system than I do, I just do the billing and the accounting of it.
Okay.
Hunter, do you have a presentation?
Um, like Charity stated, um, you know, with the trends on that meter, I don't show that there's any way that meter's defective. It's been in place for several years, and there's only one time where it's in, uh, been in question. You know, in my experience, and meters of this type do not read fast, something has to flow through them for them to read. So, it's, it's kind of a, a physical limitation to the meter. It takes water to turn an impeller in the meter, which turns the dial or the register, which these are all now digital, they're not mechanical. So, it's just, something has to go through the meter. Kinda go on with charities, um, you know, just giving them the math real quick on flows through a meter, or like a garden hose, you know, depending on length, there's all kinds of factors, but our, with our pressure in that area, you know, you're looking, you could run 1,000 to 1,500 gallons an hour through that garden hose, given our pressures and the, the size of main line and everything there. So, I don't know if that's gonna help you guys with anything.
Are we still changing out meters, do we still have some that are?
Apparently, they're all done now.
We are not.
All the meters have been changed out.
So, this is...
So, Hunter, I'm sorry, you, you said that 1,000 gallons a minute?
No, an hour.
And, where the heck did you get that information?
Um, on average, you know, given our pressure, which there, you're probably, you know, you're between 45 and 48 PSI, depending on, you know, who else is using water, um, through a three-quarter line, it's about 17 gallons per minute.
Oh, I, I, I talked to several plumbers who said that the average garden hose produces, um, at 375 gallons per hour.
No, absolutely, you know, I mean, you think about how quick you can fill up a five-gallon bucket out of a garden hose. You know, you could fill up three of them easily in a minute. And that's an AWWA standard that I, I looked up tonight.
And just in doing...
That's just, that's just not what I learned.
Just in doing a real quick search on the internet, um, I came up with 1,020 gallons an hour from a water hose, a five-eighths inch water hose. So, any of those single days, you could easily count for the amount on those single days if a sprinkler was left on all night. And when you walked after getting the bill, you probably wouldn't have seen a wet area because it wasn't necessarily still wet.
It would have to be after using 7,000 gallons of water.
That's less than eight hours of having a hose running all night long.
Well, if the reading was taken at 12:15, it wouldn't have been running all night long. If 1,000 gallons per hour is correct. That means it would have had to start it at like 6 o'clock in the morning. If you start a hose at 6 o'clock in the morning and turn it off at noon, you were certainly gonna have a huge puddle of water.
Got a quick question, how often does the meter?
If it's a sprinkler, it's not gonna necessarily just stay in one place. But these daily usages, uh, 9/6, 7,040, 9/2, 3830, 8/25, 45, I'm sorry, 4850.
48, yeah.
And 9/25, 5380.
And they're all at 12...
If I may, um, with this report that we submitted to you, it goes by date and time, and so it starts at 9/6 at 11:15 PM. Well, starts at 9:5 at 12:15 AM and ends at 9/6 at 11:15 PM, and for that entire period, it was 7,000 gallons. Because each hour, you're having a rough estimate of 390 gallons move through it.
So, that's still a 24-hour period?
Mm-hmm.
But 7,000 gallons, if a hose is running, even at the lowest pressure that Hunter calculated at 1,000, um, gallons per hour, that's seven hours of leaving a hose on.
Mm-hmm.
So, if the hose had a small leak, then it's...
Even if it doesn't have a leak, if you've got a sprinkler going, how many times have you forgotten to turn off your sprinklers?
You?
Yeah, so have I.
Well, well, first of all, I mean, they, these guys don't have any yards. So, for them to be watering weeds doesn't make any sense to me. Uh, second thing is, you said something about 790 gallons per minute? Or, I mean, per hour, I'm sorry.
390 gallons per hour.
I have a question, you said these guys, are you renting that property out?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Sorry, it's, it's a fourplex.
Okay, so you don't...
No, 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 it's, it's, it's three separate houses, all on the same water line.
Okay, so they all read this, they all have the same meter then?
Yes, correct, yes.
So, it could be a combination of all of them running water?
Yeah, but, but Charity just said that they were running, it was, um, so they would have had to start it early in the morning, I, I was trying to write that down when you were talking about that, but...
So, me looking at this report is indicative of probably a toilet valve being left open all night, and then somebody using the toilet in the morning and it's closing and it stops the leak.
That's what I was wondering too, if it's, if it's three properties, if someone's toilet is running, and they don't catch it, because that toilet water is gonna run all night long in their tank. Because it might not necessarily be the outside water.
Correct.
Be a toilet.
But we, we've, we've checked all the toilets and everything, and, and they're, they're all fairly new.
Right, I know, what I'm saying is, they could have act, like, the valve could have been left open, and then they realized that, that morning, and then they just jiggled the handle and it closed, and it hasn't done that since then. So, it could have been that, and then they just don't realize it, and they're like, no, we haven't used water.
Apparently, it's possible that it's done it.
A few times, actually.
Well, the other weird thing is, it's almost on a schedule, you look at it, it's four days, and then seven days, the next event, seven days, four days. There's not a whole lot in between.
Yeah, and, and the, and the days in which the, the usage is high, I mean, everybody's working during the days, you know, so, I mean, they don't run the hoses at night and stuff, I mean, so, you know.
No water at night.
I wonder if like a kitchen sink could have got left on?
It would have to be a good, I mean, it'd have to be turned on all the way.
Yeah, I don't know.
That, that's more than a, a drip. But a toilet running all night. The only other thought is that you have three houses on this, um, meter with the pattern of when they were there, did they have extra people in the house, so extra showers, extra toilet flushing, extra, extra laundry.
Extra dishwasher running.
Washing cars, um, you know, is, that's unfortunately the problem is...
Well, looking at this report, the high usage starts at about 2:15 PM and ends around 7:15 AM.
So, from middle of afternoon all night long.
Mm-hmm.
Right, which is, yeah. Yeah. There's, there's three single people that live in each house. They don't have yards, they don't have vehicles worth wash, I mean, I hate to say that, but, worth washing, I mean, and, you know, they're very respectable people, we, we make, we took a lot of time going and talking to each one of them, I wish Mike was still here. They don't have leaks, they don't have, they don't leave faucets on, their toilets aren't running, they notice it right away if it does, which they said they never do. It, it just doesn't make any sense for the timeframe based on the amount of water, 36,000 total gallons, even 7,000 gallons, where the hell's the water?
Well, if it was a toilet or something like that, or just extra, as we stated, toilet flushing, showers, laundry, dishes, whatever, um, that would go through the sewer system, so you wouldn't see it outside.
There's something to know.
Correct. But that's a lot of water through the, the internal, see how?
I did a little bit of research before, and it looked like studies show that 17 gallons of water are used per shower, that's about an eight-minute shower. Usually about two gallons per minute in a shower with the water pressure. So, that would be, I, I don't think it would make a thousands of gallons in difference.
Right.
Just trying to think of any possible...
I would say after four and a half years of utility billing experience, nine times out of 10, when we have a usage like this, it's a toilet that's running almost all night. And we had a lot of issues with people in town having that problem, so the town stocked up on toilet tabs for them to actually check their toilet with to see if they were leaking. I know that that did not happen in this case, but I'm just speaking from my experience of the billing, that history that I know.
Okay, council have any other questions for the staff? Uh, Mr. Pierce, do you have any more follow-up questions for the staff?
You know, I, I guess the, the big thing is, since this whole thing started, Mike said that somebody was gonna inspect that, have that meter inspected and possibly replaced to see if the problem would go away, did that ever happen?
Well, the problem went away without the meter being replaced, so that eliminated the issue of the meter.
For sure, it's a digital meter, for sure, for sure, for sure, there's no possible way that that meter could be faulty.
If the meter was faulty, how come your last reading that we just did and billed you for was 13,000 gallons?
Don't know.
Normal average.
I don't know that. So, was, was it ever inspected? Mike was gonna have it inspected, was the meter ever inspected? I mean, is it possible to inspect the meter, I don't know.
Hunter?
They can be inspected, it's, um, actually rather costly, you have to go through Denver Water for a certified inspection, and last time I had one done, I mean, granted, this was 10 years ago, I believe the cost was $180 for a certification on the meter. The meters themselves are roughly $200 to replace. Um, you know, Mike never brought it to my attention, that he had said that he would have it inspected, so I can't speak for that, honestly.
Right.
I just have to go off of the correspondence between Mike and the utility billing clerk. You know, in his email on September 11th to Heather, he states, um, it did not read they have a leak, but does show they have a high usage, and it looks to me that they're using that some, water somewhere. So, that's what he reported to Heather on that day.
Right, yeah, and, and I understand that, and I guess, you know, my, my point is, we, me and Mike walked the entire property, and everything was bone, bone dry. So, you know, where's, where'd the water go, I mean, even, even if they left the spigot on a week before overnight, we would have seen some evidence of water, but it was bone-cracking dry. So, I don't know, I don't know where the water went.
And, to my point, it's my job to evaluate data and numbers, and right now, the numbers are telling me that there's nothing wrong with the meter.
Yeah, I just wish we could find the water.
Can I interject here?
We can barely hear you, Daniel, speak up.
Can you guys hear me?
Kind of.
Kind of.
Can you hear me now?
Now.
I'm thinking...
There we go.
Just for sake of clarity, I think we should have the meter inspected, just to kinda see why.
I kind of agree as well, and I think they should get toilet tabs to see if there's a leak inside one of the toilets in one of the units.
We did that.
Oh, you did, and there's no leak?
Yeah, yeah, when, when I came to the town hall, um, they gave me some, and we, we did that for, um, about two weeks straight.
And was that during the high-usage period that?
It was, it was right after I met Mike, right after we got the bill.
Okay, so in September?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did it for at least a couple of weeks' worth.
Counsel, can I ask a clarifying question, or I guess Counselor Warren, who would you want to pay the cost of the certification inspection, $180?
Um, you know, honestly, I think I think it's, I, I don't have a good answer for you, I think that the town pays it upfront, and then if the meter turns out to be good, then we can discuss maybe possibly splitting the cost of that inspection, I don't know, I'm open to any option.
Yeah, remember, we're talking about a water bill that's 300, what, $17?
Yes, that, um, extra usage is calculated out to 310.32, so, if 10 years ago, the cost was $180, we'll have to see what the cost would be to have it inspected.
At this point, let's, um, finish out the hearing, and then we'll discuss what we can do beyond that. So, Mr. Pierce, do you have a closing statement you'd like to present?
Um, I, 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 I don't, I, I mean, basically, I would just like it if the town would just say, you know, let's just write off the $317 or $10 and move forward. That'd be the easiest solution.
Okay, does anybody else have any final statements?
And if we did that, and it goes back up again, are you willing to pay the regular price that your bill states? So, if you have another $310 charge, say next September, August, are you willing to pay that then, seeing as?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess so, I mean, we'd be in the same boat, but, I mean, at least it would, I, I don't even know, I don't know how to answer that, I don't know how, how it would give us information telling us that there's, the problem is continuing, I don't know, I, I don't know, I mean, obviously, we'd have to address it at that time.
Right, it was just a question.
Right, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, I declare the hearing closed at 6:27, and now we will discuss, discuss options for Mr. Pierce. So, the one option that is out there already is brought up by Daniel of doing the certifying that the meter is working correctly, what we need to discuss is who will be, um, paying for that? And, Miss, oh, there he is. So...
I kind of agree with Daniel on that, and I think, you know, if the town, you know, fronts the money and comes back that the meter is perfectly fine, nothing's wrong with it, then, you know, Mr. Pierce would end up having to pay that plus the $300 for his bill. If it comes back that the meter is wrong, then maybe we can forego the $300, and then he doesn't have to pay that.
The other thing out there, as Charity pointed out, that $180 was 10 years ago.
Right.
Hunter pointed out, these meters are about $200 to replace.
Or we, yeah, or we could just replace the meter.
Do we find out what it's gonna cost to get it certified, and if it's a lot more than the cost of just replacing the meter, do we just replace the meter? Assuming that it's no good.
If it's cheaper than...
I agree with Sarah, and I think that we should, um, call and see how much it's gonna cost first, and then kind of leave it up to Mr. Pierce, because if there's nothing wrong with the meter, he's the one that's gonna be paying that bill.
I agree.
Is that the feeling of the entire council?
Yeah, I think so.
Daniel? I don't think that was...
Yeah, guys, my connection's going in, my connection's going in and out, so, um, I gotta move to a better service connection. What I, what I'm think, I agree with Candace and Sarah, the fact that there's no evidence outside the building, there's no giant puddles, leads me to believe that that water went down the drain somewhere. And the only way it's gonna go down the drain somewhere is if someone dumps it down the drain. It, it's, it's unfortunate, it's a difficult situation to prove, like, from either side. So, I think the town takes its due diligence and pays to have the meter inspected, and if it comes back, the meter's fine, Mr. Pearson's on the hook for that. And if it comes back, the meter's fine, Mr. Pearson's on the hook for that bill.
And I disagree. I'm not going to pay for that. Sorry.
So if we have somebody come out to certify the meter that it is good, you will not pay for that certification?
Because I don't know what that certification details. Is that certification going to say that back in September, that meter was working functionally? Or it, or there's a possibility that back in September, even though it certifies today, that it was not working properly?
Counsel, can I interject with a little, with a suggestion that just keep in mind that anything you do for Mr. Pierce is going to then become an option for every water customer in town? So it seems to me you have staff indicating their confidence in this bill. And I, I'm concerned about second guessing that now and opening the town up to, um, monthly disputes with water users, which would require the town to certify multiple, um, water meters. I think it really comes down to either trusting your staff's assessment of this or, or not. And, um, if you'd like to delay the decision, I'd be happy to provide more legal advice off the record. And then you could, um, take up the decision at, at a following meeting.
I will add one thing and Hunter can talk to this further. It's in his, in his wheelhouse. It is very, very, very unusual for a meter to go wacky for one month and then go back online the next month. That's not, these are mechanical devices.
Or go wacky for one day and then go normal the next day.
It is. If, if there's something wrong with a meter, that condition generally stays. So if a meter is not reading or reading high, that is something that generally is a condition that stays. It very, very rarely bounces back to where it was, in my experience. And Hunter can speak more to that if you'd like. Because these are mechanical devices. When the, the day comes down to it, water has to go through a flywheel to move the meter, then it's read electronically and then we read it electronically from there. But the act is a mechanical act.
Well, at this point, I think we should get more, um, information and advice from Hillary before we make a final decision.
I agree because unfortunately it is a rental property. We can't, he doesn't live there, so we don't know what actually happened. So we need to look at it from that perspective as well.
Correct.
I agree.
All right, then we will table this for the moment. Um, we will get more advice from our city attorney or our town attorney. And we will let you know, Mr. Pierce, when we have made a decision.
Sounds good.
Madam Mayor, the town's going to have to make the decision on the record. So this is going to need to be reset for another agenda.
All right, we will reset it for the next meeting, the second meeting in February. The 17th, so it'll be set for the 17th of February. Okay, on to general business. Ordinance number 21 dash 1, ordinance amending section 16 dash 31 of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to the Board of Adjustment, second reading.
Thank you. Um, this is an ordinance, um, laying the board adjustment. It got through first reading with no amendments and this is its second reading for approval. Any questions from staff on this? Or for staff, I guess. We'll try it that way, too.
Anybody have anything that need to add? Then I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 21 dash 1 and ordinance amending section 16 dash 31 of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to the Board of Adjustment, second reading.
I second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 2B, ordinance 21 dash 2, ordinance amending chapter 2, article 7 of the Hudson Municipal Code to assign the Hudson Cemetery Board duties to the town council, second reading.
Thank you. Similar to what you just passed. This is to kind of bring in the duties of the cemetery board to the town council because the cemetery board meets, uh, once every millennia. Um, and so it doesn't make sense to, uh, staff that board. It got through first reading with no amendments. Is there any questions?
If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 21 dash 2 and ordinance amending chapter 2, article 17 of the Hudson Municipal Code to assign Hudson Cemetery Board duties to the town council, second reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 3C, resolution 21 dash 07, a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement for town, for towing services.
Thank you. Uh, this resolution is for approving an amendment to the agreement. What that amendment basically does is extend this for one more year, which is in the contract. We have had no problem with their services. They have done everything we have asked them to do. They are insured. And we, as a town, uh, only spend 700 to 1,200 dollars a year on this. The other costs are, uh, incurred by the people who are getting it. And those costs are broken out into schedule, uh, in the contract. Uh, this will, uh, we'll discuss with you in a year coming up and putting this out to bid. So far, uh, we've been very satisfied with the service we're getting.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 21 dash 07, a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement for towing services.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember Mestus?
Yes.
Councilmember Stadler?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Knoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Harges?
Yes.
Okay, staff reports. Guy?
Thank you. Uh, a couple of issues. One, starting off with code enforcement. I actually spoke to Chris Pratt, who is a gentleman who did our code enforcement league, um, locally. He worked through Safe Filth. He is not able to take this position, but he gave us some very, very good suggestions on how to get that whole thing up and running. So we will be placing the ad for that and I'm going to follow up with Mr. Pratt, um, to get his, in fact, we, I'll discuss with you guys actually retaining him for a brief period of time. He does have a company that does this and he does very, very part-time stuff for Plattville. And he works with the state, but he can get us some hours, um, because he can tell us about software, train us on the software, what state organizations we can, uh, work with, stuff like that. So I'll come back and talk to you guys about that. Um, next meeting, we are having a water presentation. Um, staff and consultants will be providing a water presentation to the council. We'll cover three basic questions, uh, that we've kind of distilled down after a couple of months of discussing at a staff level. Um, and if we can get these answered, uh, we would be able to better go forth and craft some policy for the council. Um, I'm also planning on inviting members of the development class so council can kind of see their side of the story. I think that's important, know what they're going through. I would really encourage you guys to get citizens to attend this, too. This can be a really important meeting. So, um, all hands on deck for that one. Um, we received one application for the Small Business Relief Program the town is administering on behalf of DOLA. Uh, I'm waiting to act on that grant until I have received the funds from the state. I have now, we've had about four conversations in two days about, did I get it through their website? Did the portal accept it? All that stuff. Let me call ITI, I'll call you back, so. But, um, we have touched base with the other, uh, businesses in town, have not heard anything back from them.
Is the deadline, is the deadline passed to apply for that?
Uh, we're extending it. So, no, it has not passed now and we are going to extend it because the state extended their part.
Okay.
We were under a very, very, very tight window from the state. They've now extended that, I think, two or three times. So I just wait for the next update from them.
Okay, I, I would just, on that, if anybody knows how to get ahold of Lisa from the bar, she is one of the other businesses that will qualify for that and she has not responded.
Yeah, I've sent her emails. I've knocked on her door. I've, so, we're trying to get ahold of her.
Yeah, okay.
And if she has any questions.
All restaurants and bars is what this covers.
I mean, I mean, have we reached?
Yes.
Yeah, have her get ahold of me if she has any questions, check her email, everything like that. Uh, the cemetery has been sonared and surveyed. Um, we had over 30 unmarked graves. Unmarked meaning they didn't have a headstone. A lot of them do have flags, uh, leftover from Memorial Day. They kind of seem to be in some sort of order, but we'll know more. We received a complaint from a citizen about the rough conditions out on, uh, the County Road 52 Interstate 76 project. Apparently her vehicle suffered damage. We have informed her that we are sympathetic to what happened. Um, but we are not responsible for that damage. We did provide her contact information for CDOT. I did bring this up. I have a weekly meeting with CDOT on this project. I brought it up to them. That got forwarded to the, uh, subcontractors. Suffice to say, the answers we did provide to her were not sufficient for her, but unfortunately, that's where we're at on that issue.
Is that that pothole getting on the highway?
I'm sorry.
I hit it yesterday. Holy moly. Oh, yeah.
There's a few of them out there.
And we.
I'm going to call the town.
Um, and then I'll be issuing a, something called RFI. You've heard of RFPs and RFQs and everything. An RFI is a request for information. We've kind of hit a wall internally with staff technology. We're kind of held together with duct tape, bailing wire and good intentions. Um, and so knowing what the police are going to have to do for recording data, all those types of things, we are, the request for information is you send it out to companies. They come and look at it to kind of tell you what you're looking at and what you need. Then you send a request for proposals out and oftentimes they respond to that. But this one is purely a search of information, so we can try to get you guys something to contemplate at budget time in August. So it'll be an ongoing process, but we're kind of bumping up to some difficulties with, uh, the technology. We got all our internet shut off because they hooked up something for TASER practice. And so we were literally like, we can't get it. And it was a couple of days. And we had to call people, get down here. Kevin couldn't find it. We called Rogan. It was literally like a wire that they had. And so that's just kind of how the technology in-house is all set up. Um, that's all I have. Anything, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Hillary?
No update, thank you.
Charity?
I don't have much. I just wanted to let you guys know that in record time, Heather Meyer-Court, the deputy clerk, has earned her certified municipal clerk designation. So you now have two certified municipal clerks working in your small little town of Hudson.
Nice.
Congrats.
Congrats. Jen? Hunter?
We're just taking advantage of this time to get a lot of training done for the guys, both water, wastewater. And, uh, my new guy is in, uh, we're getting them on some equipment and, uh, getting them out in the field, get some training. I'm sure you've heard about the, the alleyways that we started blading. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a double edge. We're out, uh, blading them, but it's also a good time to train these guys. It's a safe area for them to work in. They're still plugging along on the, uh, the pump station. They're putting in the fiber connections right now, so hopefully that's going to get rolling here in the next week or so when you start to do some testing on it. Um, the lights have been installed at Cedar Park and at the fishing pond. Um, we're just waiting on United Power to hook those up and they'll be operational. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
Any questions for Hunter? Okay, Jay?
I don't have, uh, too much. We put, uh, we've got, uh, one person, well, two people in training now. We have now a patrol sergeant, so that's helped out a lot. Um, and we've just been super busy. Uh, I think we executed five search warrants in the last 10 days or so. And I just signed the complaint today for our, uh, one subject we took into custody on federal charges. So he's looking at like 96 years and they'll probably give him a deal for 64. So they're, they're doing their, their part on that. And hopefully this gentleman never has an idea of driving through Hudson again with a sawed-off shotgun, at least, and drugs. Um, other than that, we've just been, uh, pretty busy.
Okay, any questions for Jay? No? Daniel?
Uh, yeah, I did have a quick question. Um, in kind of regards to the possible repaving of that street in the Hudson Hills community, some of the homeowners on that back bar corner brought up a concern that there's no street lighting in that back corner. And they wanted to know if that's something they should go to United Power about? Or is that something they approached the town about? Or how, how do they go about expressing that concern?
Hunter, you want that one?
Yeah, I've actually, uh, before the cops shifted schedule, I was working with one of the night officers on locating areas that need, uh, more street lighting. Um, I will go out and take a look at that. Is that kind of Buckboard and Remington area? And maybe Remington and Wyatt?
Yeah, it's kind of where that, uh, Remington kind of goes around that corner and then heads into Buckboard. I think the, the last street light is almost that Remington and Foxtail or shortly after that. And then there's no streetlights all the way to Buckboard.
Okay, yeah, I will put that on my map. Um, what we did with the streetlights for the park is, um, what's called the United Power Underground Fund. It's a lump of money that's part of our franchise agreement that they save and set aside for us. So that's probably something I can look into using some of that money for, um, as well as some other lights throughout town. So I will put that on my list and I'll be talking with Jay Mendoza about it here shortly.
All righty, thank you, sir.
You bet.
I will add for the council, please, if you are seeing dark areas, send us an email so we can start looking at it. Um, so we can use that underground fund. We have a fair amount of money in it. It might not be enough to take care of everything, depending on what we get back from you. But we'd rather look at it now, like Hunter's doing, and hear from the citizens so we can kind of come up with a larger idea of what we're looking at, what the cost may be.
Okay, anything else, Daniel?
Nope, that's all for me. Thank you.
Candace? Are, are you saying something, Candace?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. Michael? Sarah?
Yes, just one little thing. Um, I had talked with Guy and Laura a little bit about this, but, um, me and some citizens want to see if we can bring a presentation to the council and to Jay and everyone about getting a community watch thing put together with, um, the community and working with the police department and doing some education to the citizens, um, that sort of thing. Just wanting to bring that in, so.
Daniel and Candace, what do you think of that?
I mean, if that's run in conjunction with the police department and the police department oversees it, I think that's a good idea. I like that idea a lot better than people putting them in, themselves in harm's way and running people off the road under their own accord.
Right, and that's what I want to do is have the citizens work with the police department and that way. So that way, you know, it builds a better rapport. They can get to trusting the police department again and they're not out there doing things themselves, you know, possibly getting hurt, that kind of thing.
I agree.
Okay.
Then I'm not opposed to letting you do anything, you need the citizens to have to say about it.
I did not understand that.
You sounded like a Star Wars character.
She agreed. We'll, we'll go with that.
Okay.
I saw you.
Yeah, I think it's good. It'll build communication, like you said before. I think the more they work together, because a lot of people that look out and are kind of the neighborhood watch now don't have that trust with the police.
Yeah, and that's what I want to bring.
And it seems like half of them don't even know we have a police department.
And that's the other part, yeah.
Yeah.
Maria? Okay.
And you're good with March 3rd?
Yes, March 3rd. I'm good with that.
Great. Thank you, Sarah, for putting that together.
Thank you guys for allowing me to do that, so.
Maria?
Nope, nothing today.
Um, I have a couple of things. Several years ago, when we went with a Several years ago, when we went with a single trash provider, we did not come up with any way to truly enforce that. And Hillary, I'm hoping you can chime in on this one, too. We now have several residences within the town who have Arrowhead, Wolf, some other trash company. We really have no way to enforce that they stay with Waste Management at this point. Wolf has been putting out tons of advertising of, you know, they're servicing this area. Guy did look it up, our contract does say we have an exclusive contract with Waste Management. People are not doing that. We need to figure out how we can enforce this, or do we even bother? The last couple of times we've put it out on the survey, even though we hear lots of people complaining about One Trash Service, the survey always comes back with the highest number of yes, keep the One Trash Service, they're happy. So either everybody who's not happy is refusing to fill out the survey, or, but that's what we have to go by, people won't let us know otherwise. But in the meantime, we need to do something about this. Hillary, do you have any suggestions or thoughts?
Hi, sorry for that delay. I'm looking up the code now related to the single hauler. But I don't offhand have, have the suggestion, I would imagine there could be enforcement language added to the code if it doesn't already exist, but I'm, I'd like to review that part of the code before I misspeak.
We would appreciate it if you could review and get with Guy if you need to, and give us some suggestions.
We will review and update where we're at on that, and yeah, give you guys suggestions for next meeting.
Okay, there's no point in saying we have to have a single service provider if we're not gonna back it up.
Right.
Quick question on that, Laura, do we have any idea why people are switching to a different service provider?
My guess is price. I don't know.
Is that maybe an indication that the town should investigate and see what the price of those other service providers might be?
We can investigate, but unfortunately, we have a contract with Waste Management for at least one more year.
Yeah, I mean
Is it something we can start looking into now? And then kind of see if we continue with Waste Management for the next year?
Go ahead, Charity.
I, I was here when we transitioned from Arrowhead to Waste Management. The number one complaint we received about all of this was that they didn't take everything everybody put out. So they were accustomed to having multiple bins and large trash pickups to your one bin that has to be completely closed on the top, or we won't pick it up. And I think that's been the biggest issue, and people don't want to have to pay for the second bin.
I have noticed that they've been picking up overfull bins lately, and stuff part, you know, sitting next to them. But all, most of the ones that I have seen is dumpsters.
The big ones?
Three yard, two and three yard. No, the big ones are legal if they're the roll-off dumpsters, if you need to get one of those for construction or
Like the, just, I think it's like a normal, because one of my neighbors has one in the back of the alley. Has a
A dumpster?
Yeah.
Because residences aren't supposed to have dumpsters anyway.
Our code specifically states that you're only allowed a three-yard dumpster if you're a business.
Okay.
Or ag.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's also another issue, is people went out and got dumpsters after we went to Waste Management because they didn't have the large pickup volume that they were accustomed to.
Right, okay.
So this is something we need to look at, if we're not gonna enforce it, why bother?
Right.
But we do have a contract with Waste Management through the end of 2021, correct?
Correct.
So we have to use them through the end of 2021, because we do have the contract. Or we can contract.
I agree, it should be, we should look at properly enforcing, but I also think that we should do our due diligence and take this year while we're still under contract to investigate the prices of other service providers. That way, when that contract comes up, we have options, if that's necessary.
We do that anyway, when the contract is coming up, we'll put out an RFP to other trash companies, typically, starting, what, November?
We'd probably back it out a little farther than that. If we're needing to reengage a company by January, we'd want something to be chosen by December, so we'd probably back it out October, so most.
Yeah, so we do that anyway. Trying to get prices right now may or may not do any good, because the prices may change by next October. But we do
One thing to realize, too, is if you negotiate, we would be negotiating a very large contract, so they'd be making a lot of money in one place. So their prices may be different than coming up and, coming up and picking up onesies and twosies. It may go down by even twenty percent. We will take a look, I think what I'm hearing from council is, first and foremost, we need to figure out an enforcement policy for currently enforcing the contract.
Yep, I agree with that, I can agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, the other thing that I have is, we've talked about it in the past, we need to decide if we're gonna go forward with it or not, and that's the enclave annexations. We have how many in town?
At least two that fit the bill for an enclave.
Okay, so we have at least two in town that fit the bill for the enclave, which is completely surrounded by annexed town property.
Not including right-of-way.
Not including right-of-way. So we need to decide if we're gonna go forward with that and actually annex these properties in, or if we're just gonna let them go the way we've been doing forever. Part of the issue with the properties that are not, are not annexed into town, they are paying fifty-some-odd-mills property taxes. Everybody in town is paying eighty-some-odd, I think it's eighty-seven total. That eighty-seven covers Hunter and Public Works, it covers taking care of the streets, it covers the police department, it covers all of these things that these people are getting to use basically for free. So that's the big difference, is they're getting all these services anyway, but they're not paying for them. So we need to decide if we're going to go ahead with this, or we're just gonna let it go.
Is that something that's gonna need an official vote on the agenda?
Eventually, if we decide to go forward with it, yes.
I mean, my opinion is to Yeah, my opinion is to go forward with it, if you're using town services, you should be paying your fair share of the bill.
I agree.
I also agree.
All right, there you go.
Thank you for the direction, so we are hearing, may I suggest that we come back with kind of a general report of what this is, some of the processes, and what some of the properties in town are, what the properties in town are that would fall into this, and whatever else we want to toss in there. We'll give you a good overview of this and ask for more direction, but we'll get you more information to work with. And we can bring that in a month, if that's okay? If we do it faster, we will, but we'll try to have it at the same meeting in a month, the first meeting in March.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, that was all I had. Citizens comments, anybody wishing to address the council on anything that was already discussed from the agenda, but you didn't have a chance to discuss? And it doesn't look like there is any citizens on, so let the record show that there's nobody else to discuss anything or make a comment. And with that, meeting adjourned, six fifty-eight, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.